The documents we're here to collect today, as I stated earlier, will be completely redacted and tabulated so that we can prove to Congress the inconsistencies that are going on. If, under this program, you so choose to have an authorized representative, it can be anyone of your choice. It does not have to be an attorney. It can be anyone who you feel is competent to help you. It can be your wife. It can be your brother. It can be your next-door neighbor. Those of us that do it did not start out doing it as a money-making thing. I have people call me at home and plead with me to please take my plane because they're at their wit's end. If you don't take the plane, I'm going to burn it. No, no, don't burn it. Anything but don't burn those records. So, for what we're here today to do is different than what we do as authorized representatives. If you have any other questions about that, you know, feel free. Now, I know there's lots of hands up here, but there's a lady in the back who's going to lose her arm if I don't answer any questions.
I'm next after her.
Okay.
Thank you. I worked in Building 111 and handled simulators. I was crunching data. I was in environmental analysis and the plant chips and, you know, that you were helping get water and the simulators. Okay, when I left there and I went to pick up my stuff that I had, all these plant chips, all the simulators, they were thrown through the trash barrel. And then they were destroyed. Plus, they got money to have more. And I was working in Building 111. They were changing their goings. I will tell you that. When I found out, I had a neck of a heart.
We need your name if you would be kind enough to do an interview with NIOSH. Go ahead.
The other quick thing I'd say, I just learned National Jewish when they send me a letter and they, you know, give me a complete physical and check my lungs, my lungs are fine. Okay.
Doesn't this all circle back to the indemnity? The subcontractors were given indemnity by the government that they wouldn't prosecute them?
Part of it is malfeasance, but at this late date, it's hard to prove. This lady had a question next.
Okay, I have quite a few things I need to say. And I'm sure I'd be quiet and nice. Don't be near what I want to say. I've been to many of the meetings and, Miss Nelson knows that. I've even contacted his office. Now, it was just mentioned that Mrs. Stephanie wants her share. We've asked her to cover my husband many, many, many times, and she keeps wanting to go after mine. And I'm reasonably intelligent. I'm some part of mine, part of it, Mr. Nelson, part of it, to the point that I've now started studying law. I'm going to hit 'em with false actions and false use of money and something don't come up on us. You refuse to accept right you want in mine because you wanted the percentage of my $400,000 that I got. And I've also got documents that I am supposed to get my wages, and I only got 15% of it. So, they still owe me 84% of it, which is at least another $400. I will settle for that because I believe it's about 500 plus. Now, I've started studying the law, and I can prove to anybody here the wages are payable and exactly how, and that's a part E in the impairment pay that $2,500 per percent. And we can go back every two years and re-qualify for the rest of it, but it runs out where they falsely use it and then refuse to give us our income. I owe the money, and I can show you with documents that would turn you purple, all of ya, including me. These documents for these people are not available, and they've got a witness right here in the court. I know where it's at. I know why. And I can take you through till 1983 on this beryllium and all this other stuff. And I can prove where they torture, physically torture, honesty. If that's continuing with our government, it's time for us to stand up and put a stop to it. Anyway, we've got to do it. And I ask you for a meeting with you and a few others at the last meeting, Mr. Nelson. I'm saying right now, there's one more chance. Well, I'm going to go silent most of it on myself, by myself. My husband is about to be lost. How do I tell you thank you?
I'm sorry.
And you call the Department of Labor, and they lie, and they talk, and they put the file away. Thirteen and a half years, boy. That's long enough. If you want to say how to save some of the money the government's gone through, put me on as an overseer for some of the wages that are paid, and it would come down to half of what's being paid.
Agreed. And what the problem is, is that Department of Labor keeps going to Congress saying that we need more money to administrate this program. But yet, there's not a congressional review to see how adequately they are spending.
I can take it clear now, to 1983 was a compromise.
They also have, in the indemnity programs, okay, with the companies, they also have to follow the DOE standards of health and safety to the workers, and that does not release them from liability. Because that is even in the EPA records, that even though you met our federal regulations, does not release you from liability. Going back to your issue again, as I'm an advocate first, I help everybody, okay? When they get stuck or they so stressful that when they look at that letter from Department of Labor, that they start having heart attacks, I say, let me be your authorized representative. Everything. And I do everything I can, put in all my time, all my cost. I fly all over the country. I know what all the sites are doing.
And you get documents from me to prove that they lie.
Exactly.
And prove that they cheat.
Correct.
And I can show documents where Rocky Flats contractor tried to kill me and burned me.
But the issue is not...
But they don't want the truth. You want to know where these documents are? Do you want me to tell you guys, or do you want me to tell my house, or do you want me to go to the public?
You really have to really realize that at every site, whenever they first started, each site had a reading library. This reading library was open to the public. They were always closed then. Whenever they started being closed, they were supposed to be given to the local library. But instead, they were giving to other Albuquerque, Oak Ridge, everything, to their main thing. You cannot get into Oak Ridge.
They were even taking out of it.
You cannot get into Nevada test sites. They have an atomic library there where they have records. You can't see those records. I went there, I spent three days.
Before I lose my husband, I'm going to stand up here and I'm going to tell everybody in here that the Rocky Flats employee, ex Oak Ridge, I'm going to stand up in court for anybody, and I will come in with documents. And I do not hide at my house because I do not trust people. And I'm tired of being hurt. And now that I'm going to lose my husband, I'm not going to be hurt anymore. Whoever I have to hurt to get even, he's going to be saved or I'm going to be there. If I have to study law on my own with the books in the library, I'll do that. If I have to sue Department of Labor, Ombudsman, President, all the way up, I'll go that way. The documents you people want, I was put in a room after they tried to kill me because I was trying to defeat some honesty. And I can show you the pictures where I was burned half to death.
How was your steward paying the charges?
And I had to tear that stuff up. And the Department of Labor finally came up and settling with me because I was taking my documents right out of the pipe. That's where their documents are. How are they going to be provided?
Correct. And that's the whole thing. This program, Congress knew, but everyone established, they had six bills waiting to be passed in 2000. They finally, in the defense office, they said, if you want this to pass, you better hurry up and get it out on the floor now. So, they did. So, that's when you passed the Part E and the Part D. During that timeframe, okay, they also realized during the congressional committee reports that it was going to be very difficult for you people to provide the proof.
Exactly.
And there was a senator or congressional man from South Carolina who was also an administrative law judge, and he said, do not make this as difficult as workman's comp. Congress said they would not. That's why in this program, it's supposed to be very simple, the least as likely as not, significant factor, everything is supposed to be, that's it, that's our time deal.
Well, can we have Jerry speak, and then I'd like to say something.
Yeah.
I've now got a sense of the meeting, so I...
I want to just put a tail in on this. Before, wait just a minute. Before you leave today, I would like your contact information, and I want to make sure that we get you as much help as we can. I don't want you to leave here again today thinking that nobody's going to listen to you.
And there's one more thing that I can let us do if they've got any intent to care about people. There are people for the, that have worked with their group, and you know them, and I can point at them, but I don't believe it's necessary. They have worked. Time, money, exercise, computers, papers, et cetera. They should get an award.
Well, we should talk about this more later.
So, we're going to move this...
On those wages, it's still new.
Jerry?
There are a couple of things that I need to bring to everyone's attention. Part E claims are very difficult to file on Rocky Flats issues. We talked about the SEM chemicals, but there was no structured chemical sampling program in place for any period of time there. So, Part E claims are even more difficult than Part B where we usually get a radiation record every year. We don't get anything on the SEM.
May I respond to that? And this response going back to this gentleman here. I understand Part E claims can be difficult. Nevertheless, on the Department of Labor's website, the Division of Energy Employees' Occupational Illness Conversation, there is a site called the SEM, Site Exposure Matrix.
Yes.
If you go to the Site Exposure Matrix, you would then go and you can pick the facility. And it has information for almost every facility, and there will be information for Rocky Flats. When you first go to that site, it will give you a list of all of the chemicals, all the toxins, excuse me, that they know were used at Rocky Flats. I believe it's about 1,000 or maybe...
1,043. These are the toxins that Department of Labor has approved to be at Rocky Flats.
Yes. However, if you then go to the expanded SEM for Rocky Flats, it breaks that information down based on the Department of Labor's information, but it breaks it down by building, by labor category, by incidents, and a couple of other things, so that you can start to narrow, in some instances, the toxins you may have been exposed to based on those listings. What they also have at SEM is a listing of about 150 illnesses. And for those 150 illnesses, it will list all of the toxins that the Department of Labor knows are related to that illness. And I do believe polyneuropathy is one of those illnesses.
They actually said no yesterday, Mr. Nelson. Okay, I think they continue to lie to me for going on 12 years of my briliosis and now this. I mean, they say at the meeting at the Union Hall, and the lady was there, we're supposed to contact you, it's been 30 days. I said, well, it's been 40 days. Well, it's another 30 days.
13 and a half years.
And then seriously, I get a call yesterday from somebody I've never heard of, didn't even know, and, oh, well, we're going to send you some paperwork saying one of them is whether or not you're going to file a workers' comp claim on briliosis. I didn't file for briliosis. The claim was done 10 years ago. It took me three years to prove it. You know, I proved it before I left the site. What the hell does I have to do with my cancer?
They took me out of the plant because I was...
Back to Congressman Curran, I've got to talk with him.
Yeah, I wanted to hear Jerry too, so now finishing that, let Jerry go, and then let me just say something. Because I got a sense of what, I mean, you guys are all so more adept at this statute, which is the most complicated damn thing ever, okay? It just is. My mind, my head starts swimming every time we get involved, and I look at all the acronyms and all the sections and the burdens of proof and all of that stuff. So, if I could have Jerry speak, and then let me say something about that.
Malcolm, your description of the SEM site is basically correct, but fundamentally flawed. What that does is it acknowledges the presence of those things. It doesn't acknowledge that there was ever any sampling program or any person that had excessive exposure was ever notified. So, it's a blind man's bluff. The other thing to answer Faye's comment about the indemnification, there's a phenomenon known as the Price Anderson Act. But there's a problem because our contractor, a performance-based contract with the Department of Energy. And what that meant is they were only allowed by 24 or 25 reportable incidents where they lost money. So, the burden was on the individual or whoever the complainant was to prove that these things ever existed because the money was denied that anything ever happened. And we're suffering from this performance-based...
What's the name of that again?
Performance-based contract. It was with Kaiser Hill. And what it was is it rewarded them to accomplish certain things at a certain time on a calendar, certain specific tasks. And then if they didn't have any A, B, C reportable incidents, then they would get the pot of gold, whatever was assigned to these various tasks. So, you've got to know that this thing has been a stacked back from the start. And certainly when we went into the D and D phase, it got worse. And your assessment again of the SEM is basically correct, but what good does it do if you just have the items listed and you can't prove, you know, their dose? And a lot of people had multiple exposures. Now, using the example asbestos. They used two standards there. There was friable and non-friable. And one they ignored, and the other, it made kind of a semi-effort to clean up. And we had the same thing with plutonium, soluble versus non-soluble. And the standard for soluble was half what it was for the non-soluble, high fire oxide. So, we were playing a numbers game everywhere we go, and then, of course, the information is not forthcoming either. So, that's why it's good that we have you two kind of semi-captain here today. You're going to help us cut the Gordy and not there, aren't you? We need the information in order to file meaningful claims.
It's really important, though, that, I mean, and I think, Diab wants to make sure everybody gets a copy of your file from DOL, DOE, and NIOSH. And at least with Rocky Flats, most of the files I see show industrial hygiene reports just for you for the years you worked, what you were exposed to in the buildings you were in. DOL really likes to, they will use those as proof that you were exposed to those chemicals.
Man, we killed them last, Stephanie.
There's a problem. I was a radiation protection technologist, I think was the last term, for about 35 years. And one of my duties was the industrial hygiene portion of it in the late 70s. And I can assure you that we had no standard sampling program for anything other than beryllium developed. And we used a thing called the drager tube, which is a little handheld pump, and then you would pull whatever it was through a glass ampule, and it would hopefully tell you the presence and maybe the concentration if it was really intense. That was the state-of-the-art sampling that we had. So, you've got to know that this thing was bear hunting with a switch. They knew it. And now the burden of proof on, especially on Part E, is how do you establish that you were ever exposed to these things? You were in the building, but you can't prove that you were over the limits, the PDL, the limits, and prove that you were ever exposed to pass what the law requires. So, we have an uphill pole several different ways. And that's enough of my sermon. And thank you, Congressman, for the time.
I can add something concerning the exposures.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, please.
No, you go ahead. I'll jump in.
In 2004, a law was enacted, I know it's late to me, but in 2004, a law was enacted that Department of Energy sites would categorize and quantify the chemical exposures per employee and include it in their medical records for their on-site exposures. I can tell you at Hanford, that is still not done. I was injured in 2002, and they did the little drager tube, and then they proceeded to hide the sample for five days. And then told me during my L and I conversations with Washington State, because that's the only opportunity I had in 2002 because E was not enacted yet, that they said there was no air sampling. Yet, six months after my L and I claim settled, and I bugged the DOE again, and I said, I want my air sample report. Son of a gun, there it is, but it's nothing I could have used in my L and I claim. The reason E should not be as tough as it is is because we know they didn't monitor, but we know what chemicals are on site by process. And in my discussions with the Department of Labor, when they say quantify and qualify the exposure, how much, when, where, I tell them, well, that's a nice concept, but the reason we have the site exposure matrix is to prove it was on site by process and labor category. You're not allowed to ask that question. That's the reason the site exposure matrix exists. So, I understand that the district offices are not even-handed. It has taken a large learning curve with the Seattle District Office. I unfortunately am seeing that you're going to have the same issue with the Denver District Office. Each district office has its own director and assistant director, and they do tend to operate semi-autonomously. It's not the way it should be. Because there is no auditing function of these offices, and because no one can go back and say, you're all not playing nice and behaving, there is no oversight. We are not allowed to go to the IG because the IG turns it back over to the head of the program, and the head of the program responds, well, there's nothing wrong here. Last I checked, the fox is not supposed to watch the hen house. All right?
They don't. You have little hands in there, but you take care of them.
But under Part E, it does. And that's why we started this. There's a hand in the back. Again.
Yeah? I'll talk again. Two issues with that, talking with Jerry's side. Anybody wants to correct me, fine. When you say DOE oversight, how many DOE people were in your building when you were running it? I ran 76 building, which everybody knows is notorious for spire. I didn't have DOE oversight. There wasn't a DOE official even in my building. Second, I'll go to the fun times. June 6, 1989, FBI raided my building. Guess what they did the night they took it? Every single damn document in that building, they packaged and got rid of. And guess what? They want to question me on ethics of my building. They've got the document. When we asked for it, what do you think the answer was? Can't find it. And I haven't seen it to this day. I retired in 2005, and I never did see it after that, but there were key documents in there on records on how we kept the building, the facility, how the radiation exposures were. I mean, we had documents you wouldn't believe, and they just lost it all. I know you were...
Who are you?
And then you want to turn around and say, gee, you worked through the... It's hard to find those.
So, just to restate, all of the documents where you could have proven what went on in your building were collected by the FBI in the raid. And when you went back to ask the FBI for copies of those documents, they couldn't find them, or you went back and asked DOE to go find them?
No, what I actually did was, was the wonderful FBI agent, when he came down, would start questioning me about my operation. And as we started talking, I said, would you, my attorney said, would you please provide the documents so you can look at what you're referring to? And he had the dumbest look on his face, called timeout and left. I cannot tell you the times I went down to the grand jury and they kicked me back out because they couldn't find the document that they were talking about. And I'll give you one other tidbit, just to throw things out there. They brought a guy in and said, I want to survey your building to see if it's contaminated. And I go, okay. So, I sent a rad engineer back with them. They spent six hours back there. The guy comes back, he's got a smile on his face, and he's laughing. It's hot, the building's hot. And I said, is it Director Smear? Stupid little question. He looked down with a dumb look, and he said, I don't know. Then I asked him the next key question. What authorized you to run that instrument you've got in training to tell me while I'm running this facility? I said, where'd you come from? He came from Chicago when he was a bookkeeper in the FBI. Tell me. Yeah, I'm not arguing right or wrong in this thing, but the people that grow are stupid, and what they did was dumb.
Well, mine are foolish.
And then if you ask us to bring up documentation, guess what? The tell me where's that? Somebody must have packed it in the truck and took it somewhere because it's so long in existence that I know of.
Well, my husband was cleaning 76, and they were working so hard that their little plastic on their hair, so they wouldn't get sick, they'd get torn, and they'd say, keep that, we got to get clean. And they were in there working with nothing, but they're not sick, even though they're about to die.
All right. Can I say something else? Look, I'm sorry, all of you have been, you worked, you served our nation, you worked in a toxic place, from the chemicals to the radiation. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. The whole document piece of this thing from the raid on has been a nightmare. I don't know if I'm ahead of schedule, Jerry, or behind schedule, but clearly it's been difficult for us in the Congress and in the Senate because Mark Udall's been working like crazy on this, Jared Polis and Stuart from Polis's offices here, Jeremy Rodriguez and I. You know, since I was elected in 2006, we've been, different statutes, different efforts, letters to try to simplify what was supposed to be simple but is terribly, terribly complicated. You all know the sections a lot better than I'll ever know because you've lived with them. All right? No ifs, ands, or buts. I thought that we'd made some progress in the last few months by changing the burden of proof. Now, I see you're shaking your head, and that's where I need some help, okay? I don't want to live, you know, I know everybody's lived through a miserable time, all right? I want to know if the burden has shifted, which is what I intended to have happen through the Department of Labor, so that if you're sick, the burden is on the government, not you, because you're in a special cohort at Rocky Flats. Now, that may not apply to the specific chemicals, but to the radiation and to the cancer that you have in your leg, that should apply.
I have laryngeal cancer, sir.
I don't care what kind of cancer you have, you should be able to be in that special cohort today.
No.
Now, I know, you know, you should be, and if you're not, I got to find out why.
I have brain cancer.
I care, and I know everybody in this room cares, and that's why we've been busting our fanny to try to switch this burden.
The Department of Labor doesn't care.
So, I need names, and I need ranks, and I need serial numbers so that we can stop this tomfoolery because you people put your lives on the line, you're suffering today, her husband's ready to go tomorrow.
He's going to have surgery.
And we have got to, if I want to, I need to understand if by switching the burden of proof, we didn't help a bit or if we've assisted. I understand that a lot of people whose claims have been out there for a very long time are set to be approved in the next 30 or 60 days. If I'm wrong, I need to know that because I'm operating under a very bad impression.
Jerry, Congressman. Okay, there has been an initial extension of the SEC years. Now, everyone is covered, they work for 250 days from 19...
Up to 83.
Up to 83.
And so, 83 afterwards, we still got to work.
Yes.
Absolutely, I got that.
Okay.
And I understand it. So, anybody after 83, that's got to be my next juror to get the burden changed for 83 and after because the place didn't change, didn't all of a sudden get clean.
It's so clean, it got worse.
But yeah.
But the special exposure cohort only applies for 22 cancers.
And there, I don't know, how many cancers are there?
Hundreds, hundreds.
And so...
So, there are pylons. Congress said, we can generally say these are radiogenic. It wasn't a nice list, it was a nice cutoff list they decided on to get through.
All right. So, this gentleman's cancer in his bones, his marrow cancer in his legs.
You mean, no. What I'm saying, Congressman, is plutonium migrates to your lung bones, that would be your legs, your bone marrow.
Right? And that's not covered.
Bone cancer?
That's not a cancer that's covered.
It's not on the 22 list.
Yes, it is.
It is.
There's also caveat, number six, okay? When you list the five, they list the 22 cancers. Number six, everything says, whatever the National Cancer Institute has determined to be the same physiological condition as one of these 22 cancers. So, you know, so like mono dysplasia syndrome. Mono dysplasia syndrome is not on the list, but it is a leukemia. So, it goes into...
Oh, I have that too, and they told me now.
No, that's leukemia.
You see, here's the problem, Congressman. We talk, I talk, I listen to these ladies, and I'm learning stuff that the Department of Labor denies.
Thank you.
They particularly deny it. And all they do, Congressman, is piss me off because who the hell, I mean, they're supposed to tell us the truth.
Absolutely.
And they're not.
I'm just so angry that these guys have been misled.
And then somebody going on to 2003.
Okay, I've got two hands in the bag, Jerry, quickly.